I've got 10 o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting, County of Starr, Monday, September 9th. Let the record show that we do have quorum, everyone being present. And I'd like to welcome everyone and thank you all for being here. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Any public comments?
There's none.
No? Okay. First item is minutes.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second. Moved in second to approve minutes as presented, discussion. All in fair, please aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next item is approval of vendors list, Ms. Alinas.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second. Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please aye. Opposed, motion carries. And claims, Ms. Alinas.
I do some more, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve claims as presented, discussion. All in fair, please aye. Opposed, motion carries. If I may, I think we have a couple of presentations this morning, or proclamations. We'll skip with the reports and we'll take them first. Certainly you all are welcome to remain for the duration of the meeting, but if you all need to leave, certainly you all can be excused. First would be item number eight, and this is a proclamation proclaiming September as National Prevention Suicide Month by border regions, behavioral health. You all want to present?
Good morning.
Good morning.
National Prevention Suicide Month in Starr County, whereas September is known globally as Suicide Prevention Month, the national suicide prevention was created to raise the visibility of mental health resources and prevention services available in our community. The goal is to start the conversation about mental health and the impact of suicide to help dis-stigmatize the conversation and help connect people with the appropriate support services. Whereas according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, suicide is the 10th leading cause of death among adults, it's the 2nd leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 and 34 in the United States, and more than 48,000 people died by suicide across the United States in each year, with an average of 132 suicides completed daily. Whereas Starr County publicly places its full support behind those who work in the fields of mental health, education, law enforcement, border region behavioral health center serve on the front lines of a war that many still refuse to discuss, as stigma regarding suicide and mental health is far too prevalent. We encourage all residents to take the time to understand the importance of mental health and taking care of ourselves, and including taking care of mental health. Something in additional that I wanted to also add is here in Starr County, thanks to dedicated social service workers, community counselors, schools, clinicians, and other health professionals in hospitals, border region, our law enforcement, faith leaders, and others try to make a meaningful difference, and lives have been saved. Therefore, together, we can, we the people can make a critical help when it comes to crisis and raising awareness and the importance of preventing suicide in Starr County. No one should feel alone when facing these challenges. There is always hope and always a helping hand. All members of our community can make a difference, reach out to a friend. The Prevention Suicide Prevention Lifeline provides immediate assistance for all at 9-8-8, where you can call or text, and encourage you to call if you or someone you know is in help. The theme of this year's World Suicide Prevention Day is Connect to Protect. This provides a roadmap for suicide prevention. We want to encourage all people to reach out to those in suffering and silence, express when they are in need of help, and lift those around us. On this day, we are reminded that help is available and that a brighter future lies ahead. Let us honor the souls that we have lost too soon and vow to do everything in our power to prevent suicide. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you all for making time to be here. And you are so right, you know, this is certainly a very serious problem that we have, and you know, just to remind everyone that's watching, that when someone threatens of suicide, it's a way of them reaching out, you know, that they need help. It falls on all of us to make sure that that hope is found for them. A lot of times, we kind of want to sweep it under the rug because it's, we feel it's embarrassing, but it's not. It's, they're looking for help, and it's up to all of us to help. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please aye. Opposed, motion carries. The other proclamation that we had was for Recovery Month. Someone here to represent that?
Good morning, esteemed Judge and Commissioners. So thank you for allowing us time to bring awareness to important contemporary issues this morning, substance use disorder, also known as addiction, and recovery. National Recovery Month, or Recovery Month, which started in 1989, is a national observance held every September to promote and support new evidence-based treatment and recovery practices, the nation's strong and proud recovery community, and the dedication of service providers and communities who make recovery in all its forms possible. This month, we recognize the more than 21 million Americans in recovery from substance use disorder. They exemplify courage, hope, and resilience as they seek new beginnings and help countless others find pathways to healing. People in recovery serve in every sector of society, as business leaders, public servants, community leaders, and more. During National Recovery Month, we celebrate their contributions, and we honor the loved ones who have supported them on their recovery journeys. We also affirm our commitment to making sure every American has the resources they need to recover and thrive. Substance use disorder impacts Americans in communities nationwide. Too many families have lost their children, siblings, parents, and friends to substance misuse and overdose. Every loss is a painful call to action. With adequate support and resources, recovery is possible. Our nation is stronger when people in recovery do well. Our community is stronger when people in recovery do well. Recovery is real, and it transforms not just the lives of individuals in recovery, but also their families, friends, and others who support them. Thank you all so much for your time.
Have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation for Recovery Month, or naming September's Recovery Month. And also, I want to thank you all for being here to present to us. All in fair, please aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Anyone else that needs to come before the court at this time? Do not, we'll follow our agenda. The reports, Ms. Alinas, tax collector.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. My report is in front of you. If you can please follow me. Our total collections for August of 2024 just for Starr County were 274,484 with 81 cents. Total delinquent collections same time last year were 359,266 with 55 cents. There was a total collection of 84,781 less than last year, with 74 cents, I'm sorry. Since 2023 taxes became delinquent as of July, projected collections remained in 102%. We have collected 76% of the projected delinquent collections. Projected delinquent collections remaining are 742,772 with 9 cents. The motor vehicle collection for the Starr County is 56,620 with 71 cents. That concludes my report. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, comments? Is there? Thanks, Ms. Alinas. Next report is county clerk, Mr. Gonzalez.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Our report should be in front of you. I'm going to highlight just a couple of items here for the month of August. Our records management's collected 5882. Our copies were 139630. Records archive was 5703. What we collected, the county clerk's office was 15,098115. Total due to the treasurer for the month of August was 30,40405. Pretty consistent, every month between 30 and 35,000, so we've been looking really well. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Sheriff's Department?
Morning, Your Honor, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is the revenue report for the month of August 2024. AUSA positions at 1,500, Marshall Transport Services at 10,834, Marshall Medical Services 3,00688, Marshall Services for housing inmates 231,714, Hidalgo County Sheriff's Office at 162,688, for a total of 410,432. The account for September 3rd, 2024 was 143 federal inmates, 80 Hidalgo inmates, 77 Starr County inmates, for a total housed of 300. The average count for the month was 119 Federals, 85 Hidalgo inmates. We show a difference from this same time last year of August 2023 to August 2024, an additional $34,701. At this point, we're at collected amount of 106%, so that puts us at 4,534 with $850. We have one more month to go.
Any questions on the sheriff's report? I just want to, you know, make sure to single out that the, on the projections, it's about 600,000 more than was projected revenues in the budget, and a lot of this had to do with the additional bids that you all took upon yourselves to put in there.
It was the additional bids, also, Your Honor, was the contract, the new contract with the market.
Increasing contract price, yeah, so, you know, I do want to thank you and of course the sheriff for taking that initiative. It certainly has helped our financial situation for the county.
Thank you, Your Honor. Appreciate it.
So we thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
International Bridge.
Good morning. This is the August 2024 report. The total revenue from traffic is 262,565 with 50 cents, and we show an increase of $46,523 for the month of August 2023 compared to the month of August 2024, and we also show an increase of $34,787 with 50 cents on collections for the month of August 2024 compared to the month of July 2024. We have the currency exchange excess of $96.67, so the total collection for the month of August is 262,662 with 17 cents.
That's very good. Also noted is that our truck traffic has been increasing for the last few months.
Yes.
And hopefully it continues. I think that's one of the reasons for the additional revenues and of course the total increase, so that's really going to help. I did get with Ms. Alanis to look into the possibility, Commissioner, if we had some money left over so that we could go ahead and give Roma a lump sum payment. I guess we'll get together later today?
Yes.
Okay, so then hopefully we can give him this month.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Treasurer, Ms. Gonzalez.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. This is my report for the month of August 2024. If you could just please follow along with me. The ending balance for the general fund is at 3,605,491 with 88 cents. The ending balance for the road and bridge is at 574,947 with 80 cents. The enterprise funds total balance for them is at 1,911,95 with 9 cents. The drainage district, it is at 3,963,297 with 37 cents. The INS, the ending balance is at 1,861,453 with 37 cents, which brings all the grand total ending balances to 11,916,285 with 51 cents. And the recovery is at, we have the balance at 3.78 million, Judge.
Okay, that's the ARPA funds?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. County auditor, Ms. Alanis.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. I have my report for August 31st, 2024. I'll start with page one, cash summary for general fund. We have 3,407,321.
Ms. Alanis, hold on, just saying.
Yes.
I don't have, it's in here?
Yeah. Okay. There you go.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, page one is the cash summary for the end of the month. General fund has a $3,407,321. Our road and bridge fund has a $498,486. Our payroll clearing account currently has $226,807. Moving on to page two, budget summary for general fund includes a year-to-date collections, Page three and four are the expenditures for general fund with a total of 19,727,892 with revenues over expenditures in the amount of 119,434. I'll move on to page five, budget summary for road and bridge. Total year-to-date revenues, 6,453,025. Year-to-date expenditures, 6,578,512, with expenditures over revenues in the amount of 125,487. Page six, I have the budget summary for our enterprise funds. International Bridge has revenues over expenditures in the amount of 590,936. Our gas system, total revenues over expenditures equals 302,249. Our transfer station has expenditures over revenues in the amount of 277,237. Our INS funds has excess revenues over expenditures in the amount of 107,575. And our American Rescue Plan Fund currently has 3,003 million, excuse me, 3,517,575. Page seven, our debt summary for the end of the month of August. We have total debt outstanding, 2,711,882. That concludes my report.
Yeah, on the transfer station?
Yes, sir.
And we've got, and I have run over that, and I've asked her to review what the tipping fees are in the surrounding areas. We haven't visited that in quite a while, and currently, we're at a deficit, so we need to adjust that so that we can, I mean, at least break even.
Okay.
So hopefully by next Commissioners' Court or next month, we'll present something to the court.
All right.
Any questions for Ms. Alanis?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alanis.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on with our agenda, under item eight, well, we did item eight and nine. Item 10 is to discuss the proposed tax rate schedule and to schedule a public hearing. I will, in a nutshell, try to explain what the tax rates are being proposed, and then we'll have a public hearing later, but in a nutshell, what we're proposing is that we give a 3% raise across the board to everyone with a floor of $1,200 and a ceiling of $2,400. That means that anyone that gets a raise of 3% and it's not up to $1,200, they will get a minimum of $1,200. If the 3% is over $2,400, then all they get is $2,400, and that's so that we can keep the gap between the higher-making salaries and the lower, so it doesn't become a huge spread. So we are recommending that. On the tax rates, what we are proposing for this year on the M&amp;O is pretty much about the same. We're lowering it about half a penny from, well, last year we were at .479. This year, we're proposing a .472, 2127. INS, we left at the same. FMFC, that's the road and bridge, also goes down about .3, or about quarter of a penny. The drainage went up a little bit from .0013 to .0015. So the bottom line is, for the taxpayer, last year, we were paying .7204 for every hundred dollars of value. This year, we're proposing a .7107, which means it's a penny lower. We're lowering the tax rate a penny for the taxpayers. Now, I'll just make a comment based on other taxing entities discussions that I've heard, where it was discussed that they're making more money, and this is true. We're generating more revenue than we were last year, but this is not because the taxpayers are paying any more money. This is because of the growth that we've had in the county, the green energy, the new stores that have come in, the new development subdivisions, homes, all that is new value that comes into the county, so naturally, there's going to be more value out there, there's more money coming into the taxing entities. But the tax rate, if everything remains the same, our taxpayers will be paying less taxes than they were last year. I just wanted to make that point clear. So that is what I'm proposing. We do need discussion. Is there any discussion on that?
Whether the effective tax rate, which is, Judge?
It is, yes. The effective tax rate, what that is, and I know you're aware, but for the people out there that are not, the effective tax rate is the rate that would generate the same number of dollars that we have generated last year. And then there's a rollback rate. The rollback rate, the legislature allows the taxing entity, in this case, the county, to increase year over year the amount of money that we can collect from taxes by 3.5%. So, but the effective tax rate, we're below the effective tax rate, and we're below the rollback rate. Like I said, we are lowering the taxes a penny for every hundred dollars of valuation.
So that, we're not going to approve the effective, we don't approve the?
The tax rate that's being proposed, right.
That'd be lower.
Yeah, and again, this is not to approve. This is just to discuss and to have a public hearing at this rate. And then after the public hearing, then we will approve the tax rate, and if that is approved, we'll approve the budget also, and that will be scheduled for September 17th.
So right now, you need a motion on?
Yes, we need a?
To approve that tax rate for the public hearing?
For, yeah, to approve the, or really to discuss it and take a vote if you all are in favor of this tax rate, and then we'll bring it to the public.
Motion to approve, Your Honor?
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please aye. Opposed, motion carries. And again, we will have a public hearing on the 17th, and hopefully, if things go well after the public hearing, it will be up for approval, and then it will become official for the tax rate. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of Ms. Cynthia Fuentes to border region MHMR. Her term expired, so.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 12 is also an action item, and it's to approve a contract for leasing a new copier for a maintenance agreement from Total Imaging.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please aye. Opposed, motion carries. Again, this is preliminary, so.
Yeah, preliminary.
Item 14 is an action item to rename Hibiscus Street to Hibiscus Road.
Motion to approve.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 15 is an action item to approve the 2425 Suspension Bridge Restoration Project.
That is correct, and this is the loan that was approved last Commissioners' Court.
For the stipend?
Correct.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 16 is an action item to approve a MOU between American Red Cross and County of Starr.
That is correct, Judge. This MOU, we renew it every five years.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 17 is an action item to approve the imposition of optional fees for 25 for the tax collectors of motor vehicle. I believe that this is the same that we've had for the last few years. Is that correct?
Motion to approve.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please aye. Opposed, motion carries. The next items have to do Yes, we need a-
Approve that tax rate for the public hearing?
For, yeah, to approve the, or really to discuss it and take a vote if you all are in favor of this tax rate, and then we'll bring it to the public.
Motion to approve, Judge.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. And again, we will have a public hearing on the 17th, and hopefully, if things go well after the public hearing, it will be up for approval, and then it will become official for the tax rate. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of Ms. Cynthia Fuentes to Board of Region MHMR. Her term expired, so-
Motion to approve, Judge.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Item 12 is also an action item, and it's to approve a contract for leasing a new copier for a maintenance agreement from Total Imaging.
Motion to approve, Judge.
Moved in second, discussion. All in favor, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Item 13 is an action item, and it's to preliminary approval for Lucero subdivision.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
Lucero subdivision is in precinct two, and we're asking for preliminary.
Motion to approve, Judge.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Again, this is preliminary, so. Item 14 is an action item to rename Hibiscus Street to Hibiscus Road.
Motion to approve.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Item 15 is an action item to approve the 2425 Suspension Bridge Restoration Project. Ms. Alanis.
That is correct, and this is the loan that was approved last Commissioners' Court.
For the stipend?
Correct.
Motion to approve, Judge.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Item 16 is an action item to approve a MOU between American Red Cross and County of Starr.
That is correct, Judge. This MOU, we renew it every five years.
Motion to approve, Judge.
Moved in second, discussion. All in favor, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Item 17 is an action item to approve the imposition of optional fees for 25 for the tax collectors of motor vehicle. I believe that this is the same that we've had for the last few years. Is that correct?
Motion to approve.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. The next items have to do with the general election, and the first one is to approve locations for November 5th, the general election. If you all need time to look this over, we can table it. We still have time, so.
Our first item on the list is the locations. I believe last time, we were discussing on whether using La Rosita as an early voting. We changed that to Escobares Community Center for that area for early voting, and then for Election Day, since it has to be in the precinct, we are leaving it in La Rosita. And then, well, we have the gym and all that, so I don't know if you guys agree, so with all these locations.
Motion to approve, Judge.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Next item is to approve the lease of equipment for the City of Rioban, or I'm sorry, for the school district.
Yes, the school district wanted to order some machines. We didn't have enough, but we are purchasing some more, so now we do, we are going to have enough. They want to lease 10 Express Vots and 17 tabulation machines, DS 200s. I've got the quote in the back of how much it's going to cost and a copy of the contract.
Now, we're not going to run their election office.
No, we're only going to lease some of their equipment.
Okay. And do we have enough equipment?
Yes, we will.
Did it with the new quotes, right?
Yes, those are with the new rates.
Motion to approve, new rates.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please, aye? And then, item 19, well, that was item 19. Item 20 is to approve the early voting, election workers, election day workers, or early voting ballot board and central count, I guess, for employees.
Okay, for that one, I want to amend it, and we're only gonna, we're going to table the early ballot board central count, so I only provided you the list for the early voting judges and the election day on the second page.
You want to table this?
No, just the ballot board. The ballot board for a later date to get those approved.
Have you all had a chance to look at the names? Now, I guess the both precinct chairs, or not precinct chairs, the party chairs can submit names, but it's up to the court-
Yes.
-really to approve or disapprove and name whatever.
Yes.
So, you know, I just want to make sure that you all are-
Yeah, these are the ones I'm recommending.
Did you all talk, did you all talk to the precinct chair on this, on this thing, or?
No, I believe we usually get an email. This year, I did not give anyone a reminder of when the deadlines were to submit those things. We went with what we had from the list from the primary.
Yeah, what I told Adam Mandina, because we, she brought this to me last week, was that maybe we should table this until the Commissioners have a chance to talk to the precinct chairs and see if they want to, they want to be running the election, and if not, we'll name whoever, you know.
For Election Day, we did talk to some precinct chairs, and some of them were not going to be able to work on that day.
Okay, but I think the Commissioners should be given that opportunity.
I just moved to table here. Take it.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to table, discussion. All in favor, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. I think that's all we had on elections. Next item is item 21, and this is a possible action item for a resolution for victims of domestic violence. Mr. Montalvo?
Mr. Your Honor, just a resolution for the children of the rapist.
Motion to approve, Judge.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Items 22 through 39 are budget amendments. Ms. Alanis?
Motion to approve.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Item 40 is an action item, and this is for a budget correction.
Motion to approve.
Moved in second, discussion. All in favor, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Anyone else that needs to address the board at this time? If not, it is 10:39, and pursuant to Section 551.074, we will go into executive session to discuss order of salaries and the risk management for the pool liability insurance. We'll be back shortly. It's 11:20, and we're back in open session. We only had two things that were discussed. One was order of salaries.
Motion to approve, Judge. But there's a, based on what we're discussing in executive session, I'm sorry.
Okay, is there a second to that? Moved in second, discussion. All in favor, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. And then the other thing we discussed was the contribution to the pool liability for cyber.
Motion to approve, based on discussion in executive session. Second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Moved in second, all in favor, please, aye? Oppose? Motion-